You're good to go.
All righty. Well, good morning and thank you for joining the Boston Zoning Commission Public Hearing, which is being held virtually to ensure the safety of the public staff members and the Boston zoning commissioners during the COVID-19 pandemic. The open public meeting law requires that I notify the public that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that an audio and visual recording of this meeting is being made. I will now take a roll call of the commissioners present at the beginning of the meeting. Please announce yourself as present, Ms. Hatton.
Present.
Mr. Demela.
Present.
Ms. Morikawa.
Present.
Mr. Mar. Mr. Mar. Mr. Left.
Present.
Mr. Arroyo.
Present.
Mr. McNeil.
Present.
Check back on Mr. Mar. And I'm here. We will now move to introduce the interpreters for today's hearing.
Thanks, Mike. We will start with David, then go to Jesse, and finish off with Joan.
Good morning, everyone. My name is David Molina, and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es David Molina, y voy a ser el intérprete de español para esta reunión. En unos instantes más, ustedes verán en la parte de abajo un icono con la forma de un globo terraco, en el cual ustedes podrán hacer clic y seleccionar el idioma de su preferencia para escuchar la reunión de esta mañana. Muchísimas gracias. Back to you, Cyrus.
Good morning. My name is Jessie Ellen. I will be the Mandarin interpreter for today's meeting. 早上好，我的名字是Jessie Ellen，我将会是你啊的国语翻译
Hi, good morning. My name is Joan. I'll be the Cantonese interpreter for this morning's meeting. 大家好，我是广东话翻译员。谢谢，Thank you, Cyrus.
Thank you all. The interpretation channels are now open. So, Michael, back to you.
Great, thank you. This is a public hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider text amendment application number 528 and map amendment application number 790. The hearing was duly advertised on November 21st, 2024, in the Boston Herald. A Boston Zoning Commission hearing on proposed petitions. The proponent will first present their case and are subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you are planning to testify, please take time now to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel. This will signal staff that you wish to speak. When your hand is raised, it will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, staff will announce your name and allow you to talk. You will unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. In an effort to accommodate all who would like to speak about this proposal, each person will be given up to two minutes to comment. Commission staff will indicate when 30 seconds remain. At that time, please conclude your remarks so that the hearing may continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents will be allowed a brief rebuttal if they so desire. Will the BPDA please begin this morning's presentation?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Ella, and I'm a senior planner on the planning review team. I'm honored to be back before you to discuss zoning changes that enable exactly the kind of project the city is seeking with these zoning amendments. Redevelopment of surface parking on public land with housing affordable to Bostonians with a range of incomes, open space, retail, and other amenities. So, the proposal before you includes amendments to the Article 50 Roxbury Neighborhood District and zoning map 6A, 6B, 6C. The amendments make the five publicly owned surface parking lots eligible for a PDA. The purpose is to enable the redevelopment of these Boston Water and Sewer Commission surface parking lots as envisioned in the RFP for the site. Next slide, please. So where are we? The five Boston Water and Sewer Commission lots, again, are publicly owned and total approximately four and a half acres. As shown here, they're located north of Melnea Cass Boulevard and east of Washington Street and are currently used for surface parking. The parking lots were first identified as a high priority opportunity site for community planning in the city's 2022 Public Land for Public Good Land Audit. Next slide, please. So here, this timeline provides some context to all that has led to today's hearing. So the proposed amendments are the next step in a thoughtful process of redevelopment that started more than a year and a half ago to use public land for public goods. So the first step on your left was the disposition process led by the Planning Department's real estate team following the land audit. The real estate team next worked with local stakeholders to develop a request for proposals, or RFP, implementing citywide housing policy goals in a manner consistent with the desires of neighbors in the neighborhood of this site. So this work included five community meetings, including two in person, which were noticed in local publications, and flyers were distributed to butters within a quarter mile radius of the site, leading to the ultimate release, and this is the second bullet, in December of last year. In response to the RFP, the planning department received two proposals. Neighborhood stakeholders were engaged again for the selection process. So the planning department sponsored three meetings at that point with the community-based product review committee, as well as a public meeting to select a proposal. Then in April, the community selected proposal from Related Beal and Dream was awarded tentative designation. I'll briefly summarize this project in the next slide. I just want to note here that the proposal for the lots includes multiple phases of development. So then, more recently, in October, in order to leverage federal funding to create affordable homeownership units, Phase One was prioritized and approved by the BPDA board, and it was enabled by a U district that was approved by this board last month. And now we're here. So the proposed zoning we are discussing today enables a cohesive approach to designing and building future phases. And I want to note here especially that the proposed draft amendments only make the parking lots eligible for a PDA. No PDA has been filed. So future phases of development, and this is the rightmost bullet, will undergo additional city and public review as part of the Article 80 process. For any potential PDA filed, there will be a mandatory 45-day public comment period and two public hearings, including in front of this commission. Then, in addition, each large project filed within the PDA will include a 30-day comment period, a community meeting, formation of a community-based impact advisory group to review the impacts of the project, again, all part of the Article 80 review process. Next slide, please. In terms of planning context, the RFP identified development objectives, including consistency with the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan and Plan Nubian Square, two neighborhood plans that are based on robust community engagement, as well as other development objectives. As you can see, there's a robust list, including creation of affordable housing and creation of public and open space. Next slide, please. Okay, so the project proposed in response to the RFP, so again, this is in response to the RFP, not under consideration today, but this was awarded tentative designation, is a multi-phase development. The project as a whole includes more than 400 income-restricted housing units with both rental and homeownership units, ranging from 30 to 120% area median income. The full project would include retail and community space and more than acre of green space. And again, the first phase of 45 homeownership units underwent Article 80 small project review this fall. So the proposed zoning we are discussing today enables future phases, a cohesive approach to designing and building these future phases. But it's the zoning under consideration today, not the project itself. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's dive into the actual zoning. So the existing zoning of the site is shown here. The blue color identifies the five parking lots. All of the parcels are within the Article 50 Roxbury Neighborhood Zoning District. Then the black line shows the boundary between the multifamily residential sub-district and the New Market Industrial Development Area, or IDA, sub-district. As you can see, most of the parking lots are in the New Market IDA. The northernmost parking lot and portion of the westernmost is within the multifamily. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, go back one. Thanks very much, Joan. So this existing zoning does not align with the desired uses or dimensions outlined in the RFP. For example, the multifamily residential district forbids local retail, and then IDA forbids residential uses. Both are relatively low density, and the base zoning does nothing to ensure the public benefits envisioned as part of this redevelopment, including significant open space and public realm improvements. Next slide, please. So here's the same map but zoomed out to show a wider context. So for reference, again, those blue lots are the lots where the zoning amendments would apply. The New Market IDA sub-district of the Roxbury Neighborhood District extends along Melnea Cass, if you can see my cursor to page right, like northeast, and spans across Melnea Cass to the south. And on page right to the east, you see the New Market 21st Century Industrial District, a whole other neighborhood zoning district. That district was the focus of the recently adopted Plan New Market Planning Study, which lays out a vision for that district to be a key center of industrial activity and employment. Next slide, please. Okay, so the proposed zoning, this is what's actually under consideration today. The proposed zoning will make the five Boston Water and Sewer Commission parking lots eligible for planned development areas, or PDAs. And there are two parts to the zoning amendments. So one is to move that black line, to move the zoning district line of the New Market IDA, to encompass all of the parking lots rather than dividing them. This change helps allow for a more narrowly focused approach to the zoning amendment rather than contemplating making a residential district eligible for a PDA. And then the second is to make the lots eligible for PDAs and to set PDA guidelines. So as a reminder, and that's illustrated here with the yellow dotted line. So as a reminder, a PDA is a zoning overlay district that establishes zoning use and dimensional controls for large or complex projects. PDAs are a useful tool when a project is well-suited to its location but can't be accommodated by the base zoning for the area. Before we further get into more of the reasons for a PDA, I'll provide more detail on that PDA eligibility and guidelines. Next slide, please. Okay, so the PDA eligibility will include dimensional maximums for PDAs that align with the community desires noted in the engagement process I noted earlier. So here's an image of the actual zoning amendment. First, so the black is existing zoning, the green is what is proposed to be added. First, this image demonstrates that there are several areas in Roxbury already that are eligible for PDAs, all of these areas. Each has a maximum building height and a maximum FAR. So what the zoning amendment proposes is that any PDA on the BWSC lots will have a maximum building height of 125 feet and a maximum lot coverage of 70%. The proposed height is based on the height in the RFP, which refers to 10 to 12 stories or more. And then the proposed lot coverage is based on the RFP development objectives I went over earlier that include open space. So why lot coverage instead of a FAR? Next slide, please. This diagram illustrates a little bit wonkier, but important to understand, the difference between FAR and lot coverage. So each of these scenarios, these three diagrams, has an FAR of one. So FAR is a measure of density, but as you can see, it does not affect how the density is designed or the footprint of the building. In comparison, the lot coverage of each scenario varies from 100% to 25%. So lot coverage is a measure of how much of a parcel a building covers, self-explanatory. But we propose using lot coverage rather than FAR as a standard for the parking lot since lot coverage is a more effective regulatory tool than FAR at ensuring open space. Again, another defined development objective. Next slide. So finally, I'll give a brief overview of the staff rationale for recommending this zoning approach. Planning Department staff explored several potential zoning pathways. One zoning pathway for the whole project, instead of both a U district, which was brought before this commission last month, and PDA eligibility, what we're discussing today, one zoning pathway could be easier to explain in some ways. However, given the specific opportunities and constraints of this site, the proposed zoning best ensures that the vision for redevelopment, as reflected in the RFP, could be delivered. So I'll go through some of those reasons. In terms of a U district, the Wu administration has filed a home rule petition with the state that would sunset urban renewal. So given that the future of urban renewal is uncertain, staff decided to employ the tool for the time-sensitive first phase, which is subject to quickly expiring federal funding deadlines, which we discussed last month, but to use other tools for future phases that will be permitted and constructed over the next several years. PDAs provide a balance of flexibility and guidance. So what I mean by this is it ensures that development can deliver on the community's requirements in the RFP, including affordable housing at mixed incomes, providing open space, and designing in a way that respects the neighborhood context, while also allowing the PDA and each project forthcoming to respond to city staff and public feedback gathered through the Article 80 development review process that I walked through earlier. PDAs are also familiar that the same zoning tool used to implement Plan Nubian and Mayor's Office of Housing's Boston Housing Strategy Plans for other publicly owned land in the area, including Parcel 10 on Melnea Cass, the Blair Lot, and Bartley Yard. And then PDAs allow for a comprehensive approach to design and construction of the full set of parking lots. It's the tool that enables exactly what we're looking for. So PDAs specifically allow for consideration of issues that affect more than just a single lot, including circulation, open space, public realm, and how buildings relate to each other. In addition, technically speaking, the proposed amendment to make the parcels PDA eligible is consistent with the goals of Plan Nubian and Roxbury Strategic Master Plan. The RFP requires consistency with both of those plans. So any PDA adopted in the area, again, that would be in the future, the PDA has not been filed, will be consistent with both those plans, thus meeting the criteria of zoning section 3-1A for development plans to conform with city plans. Next slide. And this is the last one. So earlier, I had a timeline that showed the whole community process that led us to this moment. This slide reviews the community process that led us to this proposed zoning under consideration today. So the public process has gone above and beyond that required in the zoning code. The process commenced on September 17th with the release of the draft zoning and a 30-day comment period. Then staff hosted a virtual public meeting, advertised in local newspapers, and emailed elected officials, members of the Roxbury Neighborhood Council, Roxbury Strategic Plan Oversight Committee, and the Project Review Committee, as well as members of the public who have opted into neighborhood updates from the planning department. During the 30-day comment period, we received a couple comment letters. Staff followed up and hosted a meeting with those commenters to answer any questions, clarify misunderstandings, and receive continued feedback. Then, once we had synthesized that feedback from the comment period and public meeting, we hosted two virtual public office hours to review the draft going to the BPDA board and to further answer questions and receive feedback. Finally, the draft amendments were reviewed and recommended for approval at last month's BPDA Boston Planning and Development Agency Board. Again, as shown in that original timeline, in the future, or these amendments only make the parking lots eligible for a PDA. In the future, if a PDA is filed, it will undergo its own Article 80 review process, as well as in Article 80 process for any individual large or small projects that are part of the PDA. With that, I thank you for your time and consideration, and we'll take any questions.
Great, thank you, Ella. We will now take questions from the commissioners ahead of taking testimony from the public. I will note that Commissioner Dave Marr joined early in that presentation and will be voting on this matter today. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Hearing none, we will move to public testimony. Again, please note your interest in offering public testimony by raising your hand on the Zoom app that you are using. The commission staff will call on folks in the order in which they raised their hand. You will have two minutes, and you will be prompted when you have 30 seconds that remain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have several raised hands, so, and like Chairman Nichol said, if your point has already been mentioned in testimony, please do not repeat it, and just put your name on the record and whether you're in support or against. First up, Armani White. Armani, go ahead and unmute yourself.
I guess, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hey, this is Armani White. I am a neighbor in the area. I own a home on North Hampton Street, and I also was a member of the Project Review Committee for this project and was involved in the creation of standards, community standards for Plan Nubian Square with my organization, Reclaim Roxbury, which I'm their executive director of. And just wanted to come out here today to share that we are in full support of this effort to create a PDA. We've been advocating for many years for public land for public good, and this is the exact type of project that neighbors want to see in the community. And I think that this needs to be moved along so we can create more truly affordable housing in our community. And to those who say that there wasn't enough community process, you know, our organization showed up, and we really made sure everyone in the community knew about what was going on. There were a number of meetings, we had extra meetings added due to our advocacy. So I think at this point, we need to move this project along and get us in our city some more affordable housing. So thank you for your time, and I hope that we can move this project along well. Thank you.
Okay, next, Michael Curry. Michael, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Mike McCurry, former president, NAACP, as well as the CEO of the Community Health Centers here in Massachusetts and across Boston. Just wanted to join, one, to express support for the zoning changes and the critical work of community engagement, as was just said, the importance of that process. I had the opportunity to serve on, I believe, the cross between the Menino and Walsh administration, the Roxbury Master Plan Oversight, I believe it was Commission, as well as served on Mayor Belzetti's Brockton Redevelopment Authority. Both processes always talked about a community engagement, affordable housing, cultural space, making sure we have best use of the land that both cities had available to them. So I wanted to come on and particularly support the zoning and the project of the dream-related Beal proposal, which I think speaks to how do you empower communities, how do you create affordable housing, and how do you make sure that people are moved from rental homeownership to rental to homeownership? Want to express that support. I think it's phenomenal that the city, that this process is underway and that there are proposals on the table that could really be transformational for Roxbury and for the city of Boston. So I'm here to express my support.
Okay, next is Brian McCarter. Brian, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Brian McCarter. I'm one of the immediate butters to this project, and I'm here on behalf of the 55 neighborhood members who actually live in this area who oppose this project. This project risks placing individuals with a history of substance abuse next to an open-air drug market. It's not something that's going to benefit the residents or the neighborhood, and we have serious concerns about this project. EPDA hasn't done any engagement since the last time we spoke with the community, and so a lot of our concerns remain the same as last time that I was here. This project is clear as to selectively approached groups in the area to try to make some semblance of appearing to have neighborhood support without actually having legitimate neighborhood support. So I'm here to oppose this project and anything to move it forward until this project has substantial changes should not be supported.
Okay, next is Adam Powell. Adam, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Adam Powell. I'm a trustee of 881 Harrison Avenue, and I'm here to second Mr. McCarter's views. On behalf of my own building, as well as 881 Harrison Avenue, 883 Harrison Avenue, and 885 Harrison Avenue, all 12 owners, we oppose this and all related proposals. We see this as damaging our lives. We see this as damaging our property values. There is research that shows that concentrating deeply affordable units is bad for current residents and diminishes the quality of the nearby neighborhood. It will slow our property growth. It will create a condition where there is more people that have a history of drug use living in our community, and we do not want this to happen. This is public use for public harm. Our concerns have not been meaningfully addressed. Yes, there's been various conversations, but there has not been changed. We oppose this.
Okay, next, Reverend Brown. Reverend, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Reverend Jeffrey Brown. I'm associate pastor at the Historic 12 Baptist Church in Roxbury. I'm the co-chair of Embrace Boston, and I'm also the CEO of My City at Peace, which is working on the Parcel 3 project in Roxbury. And I stand to support Related Beal and Dream on this project. It is so very important, as we move forward in this city, to support Roxbury residents who are seeking to build generational wealth with their families. That's due to the historic harm that they have experienced over decades of not being able to do that due to redlining and other related projects that have occurred in this city. But I'm encouraged by what Related Beal and what Dream is doing in order to help Roxbury residents build wealth within their community. It's really important as a city. We are now one of the safest cities in the United States, and Roxbury residents had a hand in making sure that we were one of the safest cities. They deserve the opportunity to be able to participate in the prosperity of the city. And so I'm going to be uncharacteristic as a Baptist preacher and in my comments, but I do support this project. Thank you.
Okay, next is Willie Broderick. Willie, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Reverend Willie Broderick II. I serve as senior pastor of the Historic 12 Baptist Church, also serve as the president and CEO of the American City Coalition and Nubian Square, right, budding the project that is coming online here in the community. And I want to come on today and submit my full support for the Related Beal and Dreams project at the Boston Water Sewer Lots that have been there for the planned development area and the overlay district. I do believe that this is an important time in the city where we are able to deliver over 400 units of not only affordable but workforce housing and to make sure that we are doing this in a way that will ensure that families are closing wealth gaps and that seniors and other folks in our neighborhood have access and opportunity. I really want to push back on the narrative that affordable housing and workforce housing are going to cause harm to this community. And to me, it seems like a dog whistle that the people that are coming to purchase homes and to build in a community in which many of them historically have roots in this community are going to bring some form of instability. The folks who are coming into these homes that are going and being built are not only going to be homeowners, but they are hardworking families in Roxbury. They are folks who have stimulated the local economy. They are folks who are business- They are folks who have stimulated the local economy. They are folks who are business owners. They are teachers. They are coaches. They are people who are adding not only value to our community, but they are anchors of our community. And I do want to push back on those who are suggesting anything otherwise. We are excited about the great diversity of our city. We're excited about continuing to push the growth. Uh, you've heard from others in the city today who have continued to speak about the great equity and the dignity of building housing in this particular moment. But I do think it is important that uh those who are voting today reconsider the framework that's being put forward today and dispel any outdated stereotypes about the people who are coming into workforce housing and the people who are coming into the affordable housing units. These are people who are trying to build generational wealth. These are people who are trying to build for their families. These are first responders. These are nurses. These are teachers. These are the people that are actually addressing the very harms that people are suggesting are coming online because of these projects. So I want to offer my full support of this project, and I want to thank each and every one of you for today.
Okay, next is Abigail Forrester. Go ahead, Abigail.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm traveling here. Uh, good morning, Abigail Forrester. I'm the CEO for the Center for Teen Empowerment. Um, I just want to uh come on to uh totally support our Related Beal and Dreams efforts to move forward and support the uh expansion of the zoning. Uh, also in follow, in follow-up to uh Reverend Willie Broderick's comments, um, I think it's a, it's a gross uh misrepresentation to to speak about the community in a sense of uh individuals who will occupy this space as being, you know, uh users of drugs, et cetera. Um, in my experience in working at Madison Park Development Corporation and actually supporting development in this space, um, affordable housing has been one of the key components to abate gentrification. So I find it interesting that these new homeowners who are coming into our community, um, and actually after um many community members who have held uh some of the properties that they have taken over and spaces that they have taken over um with uh nails and and hammers uh now have been pushed out and not have the opportunity to also um live in that community that they held together for years. The other aspect is that I think it's very forward-moving and progressive, uh, given our administration that um, a entity like Dreamers in collaboration with Related Beal will have an opportunity to be a part of a project like this. Many a times, we don't see um the opportunity for Black and Brown folks in our community to build wealth. Uh, so there's many aspects of this development project that means a lot to us as a community, and I'm in total support of uh moving this project forward. And thank you for my test uh for the opportunity to to present my testimony today.
Okay, next is Norm Stenbridge. Norm, go ahead.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning to everyone and the staff and everyone else. My name is Norm Stenbridge. I'm a lifetime Roxbury resident in Roxbury in Dorchester. I'm also the, one of the co-chairs of the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan Oversight Committee. The committee that oversees um these developments that have come through in Nubian Square um and all the parts and other parts of Roxbury. Um, I'm here to give my full-fledged support uh to the developments um offered up by Dream Development and the Way to Beal. Um, from the Dream Development side, we've seen uh very, very good progress um on one of their developments uh at twenty-one, at the address of twenty-one forty-seven Washington Street. So I believe they'll move forward um with with your approval um and the zoning changes that will be necessary. Um, the uh planned development area uh changes um which I've seen worked very successfully at Bartlett Yard, uh hopefully at Blair Lot, um MP three. Um, and also that worked well with um P ten um will um will help help the community move and the city of Boston move forward towards more housing, which last I knew, we pretty much need, sure. Um, in terms of um the development that will go on these lots will be a mixture of housing, not just affordable, but also homeownership. Um, as was mentioned before, uh workforce housing. Um, so there's a couple of different levels here. We're not gonna, we're not going to just roll this into one negative outlook and go from there. Um, so with that, um, again, I offer my full-fledged support for this. I hope to see it move forward. Thank you for your time, folks.
Okay, next is Cole Gibson. Cole, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, I'm also here on a behalf of Reclaim Roxbury. I'm Cole Gibson, the organizing director. And I'm just here to express strong support for the designation of these lots uh for planned development areas and for the Dream Development Related Beals Plan Development uh Overlay District Proposal. Um, you know, this team has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to community-created standards for public and for public good. Um, and let's just remember what this project is supposed to be offering. At least the development team has committed to delivering four hundred-two affordable and workplace workforce housing units, ensuring fifty percent minority-owned development team participation, um, leading a transparent and robust community engagement process. And they've already shown us their work in the process of transforming uh two-one-four-seven Washington Street. Um, and I just want to note, uh, because I know there's been uh there's, first of all, in the chat, you know, someone talking about thirty percent AMI, police officers, nurses. Low-income folks need housing too. If we're going to achieve fair housing, they also need an opportunity to live here, not just because they do a public service, but because they're hardworking families that contribute to the community, that contribute to our economy and deserve a a shot, right? And um I I know that the the other group in here that is saying there's twelve homeowners and the community wasn't, you know, consulted or talked to. But, you know, we, our organization was a part of the project review committee for these lots. Uh, we engage with literally thousands, almost fifteen hundred residents via social media, meetings and other forms of engagement, and we got overwhelming support. So I guess I'll have to say sorry that you did not feel as engaged, but the community was engaged on this project. And also, I want to echo uh Pastor Willie and others that, you know, talk about how this narrative about who's going to be occupying these spaces once they're built has to change because a-again, these are hardworking folks that deserve a fair chance as much as anybody. And creating this narrative that it's basically going to be drug users and abusers in this area, it just doesn't really align with with logical reality, in my view. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next is Conan Harris. Conan, go ahead.
Conan, are you with us?
There's uh, he's unmuted. I don't know why we can't hear him though. That's our last raised hand, Mr. Chairman, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Conan rejoins us. We'll, we'll try and make a moment. Um, we did also receive um written testimony in the chat from Alyssa Pimentel, and the commission notes that we did receive uh written testimony in advance of today's meeting that has been reviewed by the commissioners. Um, with that, we will move into our business session. Uh, any comments or motions from commissioners?
Yeah, I have uh just one other uh uh comment on the discussion of uh the opposition and the uh support for this project. And I think it's a um, I hope I'm correct about this, but I think what we're really dealing with um at this moment is whether we're going to have a PDA um uh for this site. We're not really at the point where we're um arguing about the exact um about the uh the plan itself. That will come later, and I think it's unfortunate that we have this. Um, it seems like such um um uh discord between those that are supporting uh this um uh project with affordability, with this significant affordability and uh and all the good things that are going there with those who are people who are who live next door or nearby that are concerned about uh a particular um a problem with uh drug use. I don't see that this is the point to discuss this. Um, one of the developers, John Barrows, la- at our last meeting, made, I thought, a very good um uh argument and uh agreed to work, continue to work with it, with the uh those in that have been in opposition uh that can deal with that issue. And I think that that's for when we, when it come, come back with a PDA. And I would encourage uh both the developer and those people that are in opposition to um to continue to have their conversations and deal with the particular issues that they're concerned uh that they're concerned about. Um, I didn't hear them say that they were opposed to affordable housing. I may be wrong about that. Um, I, what I heard was they're concerned about the the impact of uh of uh, you know, the residents there. Yes, there's a ten percent in uh inclusion for uh homelessness, but that doesn't mean that those are uh that 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 is um uh all of the people that have apparently caused problems in the past in Melnea uh um at Cass and Mass. Um, this isn't the time to talk about that, but I do encourage that there's that discussion going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, given the tech issue before, we'll pause uh our business session just for a moment to see if we can hear from Mr. Harris. Um, Mr. Harris, are you able, if your microphone is unmuted, are you able to provide testimony?
Go ahead, Conan. Try it now.
Uh, no, no, I'm, excuse me. Thank you.
It's faint, but we can hear you.
Um, excuse me for calling on me. I am um one of the developers. I I wish not to speak today. Um, I feel like um folks who supported the project spoke enough, and um I'm I'm, I will sustain from from speaking. Thank you. I'm staying.
Okay, we'll resume our business session. Any other comments uh or motions from commissioners?
Yeah, just, I just want to add that I think this is a perfect example of taking underutilized public property and developing it in a way to add much-needed housing to the to the neighborhood. And this, you know, this should be what is a model going forward, taking public property and developing it appropriately rather than keeping it and retaining it as surface parking lot. So um I I also just want to make the comment that I think that I'm hoping as we come together and this continues to proceed, um, engagement with neighbors doesn't necessarily mean agreement across all aspects of projects. And so I think we need to consider that um and what the, what the sort of preponderance of the, of the, of the, of the feedback is, which is, I think, very clear in this case versus a minority of of uh of a, of a, of a, of a small handful of 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 neighbors there. So um, but anyway, I'm in full support of this. I think this is exactly something that we should move in, be moving forward here.
I I also just wanted to comment, Mr. Chair, that I think the PDA is a very good tool here. You know, given the complexity of the the multiple lots and the phases and the inclusion of retail uh as well as the the sequencing of the housing and 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 absolutely um the importance of the affordable components. So I think the PDA is is a great tool, and to echo Drew's point, this is PGA, PDA eligibility. I think the awareness and as Ella, you know, outlined, the um the RFP proposal, I think that that's helpful to understand the the goals and the intentions um as well. But the PDA eligibility um means that a lot of this, as as Drew said, will be flushed out in greater detail. So I I also am in um huge support and happy to make a motion um that we approve text amendment application number five twenty-eight, map amendment application number seven ninety, Article fifty, and map six A, six B, six C, Roxbury Neighborhood District.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any remaining commissioner discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Hatton?
Yes.
Mr. Demela?
Yes.
Ms. Morikawa?
Yes.
Mr. Marr?
Yes.
Mr. Leth?
Yes.
Mr. Arroyo?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The vote is eight in favor. No opposed. The motion carries. That is our only uh hearing for this morning. Um, so we will close the meeting. Commissioners can stick around as Jeff and Kathleen have something to share with us. I think it's scheduling for next month.